Muscatine, the City Council will please come to order. We'll start this evening with a roll call by Fran Donaldson.
Councilwoman Lorette.
Present.
Gerald.
Present.
Eftig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Roby.
Present.
Lang.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Fran. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for joining us in council chambers this evening. If there's anyone in our audience that would like to speak to council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda, would you please do so at this time? We would ask you for your name and your address, please.
My name is Lisa Casti, and I live at 3319 Clermont Drive in Muscatine.
And my name's Lori Jensen, and I live at 3403 Clermont.
Thank you.
And the reason that I wanted to speak to council is regarding, I guess, meetings or the minutes from the last meeting. Apparently, it was approved for a house to be moved into our subdivision. And I just, we just want to make sure that the covenants in our subdivision are going to be followed. Looking at the house that's being moved, which we have a, that which we have a picture of, there's different things that don't fit our covenants, so we need to make sure that everything follows our covenants, which I do have a copy of, if somebody would like to see it.
Your Honor.
Yes, great.
Just, just a quick comment, and Steve may have some additional comments as well, but covenants or the enforcement thereof are private causes of action. The city or the municipality does not enforce covenants. The process that was followed, the, the property owner got permission and went through the community development office to move the home. That is dictated by city processes, and Steve can speak to those, but the city or the municipality does not enforce private covenants.
Right. And, and I'm aware that, that we need to do that. We're actually, we spoke with an attorney, and, and yeah, we're going to file an injunction is what we're trying to do to get it stopped. So that's just one of the things. And then, something that's on the agenda is the splitting of the lots also, which is later on in the agenda. So we're here to represent our homeowners, and actually, I have signatures of every homeowner that lives in our subdivision at the present time that is against both the moving of the house into our neighborhood and of the lots being split. Oh, and I did go to, down to the city or came here and talked to the building and zoning, and they actually gave me a copy of the permit that Mr. Shalangowski, who is the owner of the house that's being moved. And on the permit that was filled out, under class of work, he checked it as being a new home instead of a home that's being moved. So that's what the, is on the permit. So.
There are three issues here that it sounds like being raised. The first one is Greg's already addressed. Covenants are the responsibility of the residents within the subdivision to enforce. They're in addition to the requirements of the city. The city has no legitimate reason to deny a permit when the city code has been met by the person filing for the permit. In this case, Mr. Shalangowski took the appropriate actions, met our code requirements, came to the city for a request to move the permit, and the council rightfully authorized the moving. We had, we had no prior knowledge of the covenants, nor do we have any responsibility to enforce those. We, we just can't do it. So she, the residents apparently are taking the appropriate action to consult with an attorney and take the appropriate steps to enforce their covenants, which is how this should be handled. The second issue with respect to splitting the lots, that's a state law matter, and if the, if a resident buys, and there's already been one lot, two lots split in that subdivision before, and this issue wasn't raised at that time. And this is a similar situation. We have, once again, as long as they meet our requirements, they went to the planning commission, they had a public hearing, they had action by the planning commission came before you had a, and they were having a public hearing. As long as it meets the requirements of state law, I'm not sure the city has a lot of leeway in what we can do here. And this, keep in mind, is nothing more than abandoning utilities from existing property lines to the new property line, essentially changing three lots to two larger lots, which I'm not sure what that violation of the covenant code is, but we don't have that, nor do we enforce that. It does meet our requirements, and that's okay. The final issue with respect to the permit, when a house is moved, I don't care who moves it, it is considered a new home under our code, and it must be brought up to new building code standards with respect to electrical, radon protection levels, foundations, et cetera, et cetera. So the application was appropriately checked as a new building. It will be moved, that could also be checked, but once it's positioned on the site, it's considered a new home under our code.
But the key point is, it needs to be brought up to the current code.
It does.
It has to be. Been adopted by the city of Muscatine.
That's correct.
That's what I thought, okay.
Counsel, do you have any questions for these ladies at this point?
Ma'am, what's the actual date of the, of the movement of the home?
Um, as far as we could tell, it was, it's November 17th.
Okay.
And also, as far as us being aware of this happening, or our neighborhood being aware, when we called the city, they said they just have to put it in the newspaper, that the, that the neighbors do not need to be notified if there's a house moving into our neighborhood. But also, the notification of this happening was the same day as the city council meeting. So that's why there were no neighbors here to represent our neighborhood opposing this move of the home. Another thing that I just have regarding the subdivision and actually the city ordinance, when I went to the city to get a copy of the permit that Mr. Shalangowski applied for, under section two, number 20, it says, "All protective covenants or private restrictions pursuant to section 44 shall be shown on the plat and correctly referenced." So all of our covenants should be with that plat. And I had them pull the plat out so that we could look at it, and they're not on there. And the guy from the building department said that he's never seen the covenants that are there, or that have been with any of the subdivisions that he's aware of, but it's in the city subdivision ordinances is that the, the covenants are supposed to be with it. So, you know, I don't know if it's, now that the bank owns the lots, if it's their responsibility to at least let the homeowners know when they're buying a lot, that there are covenances that need to be followed, you know, even if they're not enforcing them? Or if it's up to the city when they come to apply for a permit, since they have the plat, if, since the covenants are supposed to also be with the plat, if, you know, the, so there's like two different times, you know, along the way that the homeowners or the new homeowners should be told about the covenants and should be able to get a copy of them.
Steve, do you have any comment?
I can, and I believe the attorney representing this matter with the lot split is here tonight, if he'd like to address it as well. The, the section she's referring to is in the subdivision regulations. It's required as a part of the smittle with the subdivision plat, and it's recorded at the courthouse. That's a part of the documents that's recorded at the courthouse, and it's maintained in the recorders office at the county. It is not a requirement of the city for those to be filed with the city or maintained by the city, because we have no jurisdiction. But they are rightfully filed, and that way, if a title search is done on a piece of real estate, you know, typically, that'll come up with the title opinion from the attorney that these type of issues are available. You know, the zoning, the covenants, those kinds of things come out of a standard title opinion. If there's any other comments by the attorney or not.
Are there any other comments?
Steve, I do have one question for you. Sorry. Before you mentioned that the home, because it's, because it becomes quote unquote "under our code," a new home, that it needs to be brought up to the code for new home. Do we, do they have to pass final inspection after the placing of the home, after they've done the work then? How do we enforce that?
Yes. Yes, they have a permit. We conduct inspections like we do for new homes. We obviously don't have ways to uncover walls and look at the framing, but I'm assuming that meets the minimum requirements of the code, or it wouldn't be subject to being moved. This is actually a very nice home that's being moved. But we will look at the foundation, we'll look at the connection, the fasteners, we'll make sure that it's upgraded to the current electrical standards, all the plumbing and vetting and that stuff that we have control over in the city is applied as part of the inspection process and prior to occupancy, as is sidewalks and driveways and all the other things that go with it.
And do they have a time period that they, a timeframe they must meet in order to get the work done?
A building permit issued by the city of Muscatine is good for one year from the date issuance.
So they have 12 months.
All of them. Yes.
Thank you.
So even if it, if it meets this, I understand that it will meet the city codes, but I kind of feel bad, because if these people are going to buy lots and put houses there, even if they meet the city codes, we as homeowners, if they're not following our covenants, can still put an injunction on it, or still, you know, there's legal ramifications that they'll have to deal with. So, I mean, I just would like these people that are buying lots to get a copy of the covenants. Whose responsibility that is, I'm not quite sure. Now that the bank owns the lots, should they be giving, you know, making sure that these people know there are covenants? Because now what happens if we put an injunction on this house? They can't move the house. And who do they go to fight? You know, if the bank didn't tell them there's covenants, then do they go back to the bank and have a problem there doing it that way?
I think that's for the lawyers, not going to be resolved tonight.
I guess.
Right, so.
I guess the only question that I had was, you know, he said it was a nice home being, you know, brought in, but it will probably make our home values go down. I mean, the house that is coming in, if you go on to the magic, it's listed at 117. And our houses on there are, what, $500,000 and $400,000? So that's going to make our homes go down and depreciate.
The assessor said that once that house is assessed, that all the homes in our neighborhood need to be reassessed.
Yep, because that'll be less tax money, because our values of our homes will go down. Because they, Central State Bank actually sold that lot for $15,000, and our current lots are assessed at 96.5. So, I mean, it's going to be a considerable tax loss for the city. So I, I mean, as far as being a nice home, it may be, but it's not, you know, as the same caliber of house as what's, you know, already there.
And, yeah, and in the paper, when our subdivision was first developed, in an article that was issued May 11th, 2006, it said that the developer's intent was to create a community with diverse housing options. So they created Steamboat Way, Baton Rouge, which was family housing from 200 to 300,000; Clermont Drive, which was single-family homes ranging from $3,000 and above. What did I say?
I don't know.
300,000 and above.
So I mean, it's actually a tax thing, too. I mean, because, I mean, it's going to make the city literally, you know, our, our properties will diminish in price.
Yeah.
Especially if they're going to allow, you know, anything to go over there, you know, on our street.
Yeah, and I was told, when I went to the building and zoning department yesterday, I was told that actually, since the bank owns the lots, that anybody can buy one of those lots and they can put trailer houses on the lots if they wanted to. So, I mean, that'll just.
Do I understand that you have an attorney with you tonight?
He is not with us.
He's not with us.
No, he, he actually gave us talking points for the city council meeting. If you'd like a copy, I can give you that. I have a couple of them.
Because we weren't notified about the meeting until we read in the paper last night, so we had very little time to prepare.
We'll give these to the clerk and.
Here's a couple.
I think Steve mentioned that we don't have.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction to enforce the covenants. What, what action are you asking council?
Okay.
Or proposing that council would take?
No, that's all right. You can bring them back.
That's all right, okay.
Do you have the proposals, what the, is the proposals in?
I don't know where we go from here.
For what?
The question I asked was, what, what action are you proposing council would take on this?
Well, we would, we'd actually like for you to, like, overturn the approving of the house being moved, and also just saying no to the dividing of the lots in our subdivision, since we, since they do not follow our covenants. So, and since we're getting an injunction put in place anyway, it says that there's no dividing of the lots. And I can look at that one second here.
And our covenants is good through 2021.
Correct. Even if the developer goes under, we, as homeowners, we still can enforce the covenants. It'd be the same thing as if the developer sold all the lots, they're not developing anymore, so it's up to the homeowners to make sure everybody follows the lot.
And we have signatures from everybody on the.
And Lori, when you and I talked this last week, you had said you had a record, a copy of the covenant stamped.
Yes.
With a recording date.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep.
But just keep in mind, like I told you before.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And we've, as far as moving the house.
Yeah, we understand that.
They have all, they followed all the requisite.
Right.
Requirements to do that.
I guess our other, you know, I think our, the biggest thing is that, you know, when the city council approved for this house to be moved, they, I don't know, being that there wasn't somebody, you know, from our neighborhood represented, that the council realized what the depreciation value would be on the street of the homes.
Well, I can tell, I sat on a county board for the assessor's office, and there was, and in May, we had people that would like to head their taxes lowered, because their valuation of their properties had actually gone down, or they felt they had been. And we, there were a lot of them, 15 probably, in the 300 to $500,000 range, that we lowered their valuation of their property, reduced their taxes, just because their valuation has gone down.
Yeah.
And if you went out and you had an appraisal done of your property this summer, prior to even this house moving, you would have been, you probably would have been shocked.
Yeah, we understand.
I say, yeah, I just got, actually, I just got an appraisal back today on our house, and it's, you know, actually, it's about $50,000 less than what the assessed value on our house is.
I'm surprised it's not more than that.
Yeah.
Not that there's anything wrong with your house, because I know where you guys live, and, but when the, when the bank goes in and they buy it, they basically get those lots back, and they're selling them for $15,000 apiece, or somewhere in that vicinity, but it's going to affect your property valuations. And the lots, there are a couple lots along your side of the street that have been for sale at 73, I think is one of them, and 40,000 is another one, 40 or 50, and they're flat out not selling.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, and regarding.
Go ahead.
Sorry, regarding the subdivision of the lots in our covenant, it's under the residential development 3.2. It says, "Subdivision of lots: No lot within Riverbend addition may be subdivided or replatted without the written consent of the developer." And so, that now is the homeowners, which is in the fifth part, 5.2, under violations regarding the homeowners, which is also in the copy that I gave the mayor.
That's your, that's your covenant.
That's in, that's in our covenants, yep, saying that, that we can enforce that. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Steve, I'd like to ask you, what's the next move?
Well, I believe they're, they're taking the appropriate steps. If they feel that there's a violation of the covenants as members, owners within that subdivision, they should consult with an attorney and take appropriate action. We are confident the city has met its responsibilities under city code, and since we don't enforce the covenant, it rightfully belongs with them, and that's where they're at right now. So I appreciate what their comments are, but.
Yeah.
There's no justification for the city to change its position, since up to this point, all the requirements of the city code have been met.
So thank you. I guess what they're saying is the next move is up to you with your attorney.
I guess my question then is, so who tells these people when they're buying the lot that there are covenants, so that they don't get in this bind if they're, you know, trying to buy three lots and splitting them, or moving a house in there? And then they end up in legal, you know.
Sure.
Heard it. Their lawyer should be doing a title search, and it should come, and that's as far as I know. I'm not a lawyer.
So they should.
They should be.
Know all the.
Those, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for coming here, and it's rather brunt, but I think the next move is just up to you, and we'll take it from that point. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to council concerning an item not on tonight's agenda? Anybody? If not, we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting of October 20 to 11?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Diane.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Scott. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven, zero. Zero, a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items eight, A through I, 12, A through D, and tonight's bills.
So moved.
Moved by Bob Bynum.
Second.
Second by Mark. Discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven, zero. Under the public hearing section of tonight's agenda, this public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of utility easements in the Riverbend Second Edition. The vacation of the utility easements would allow the purchasers of three lots within the addition to create two lots, and to create a new utility easement adjacent to the newly created property lines. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request and unanimously recommends city council approve the request as submitted. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public hearing, public to comment.
Move to close.
Move to close by Osama.
I think we have.
She'd like to make a comment.
I guess I just wanted to kind of reiterate what we had just talked about, is that even if the lots, even if the city council approves the lots to be split, that, that doesn't mean that there won't be legal action to not, you know, to stop the action, I guess, of them being able to build on the, on the two lots.
Yes. Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to be sure. Motion by Osama. I need a second.
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Right, a second. Jerry? All right. Discussion. We don't have discussion on this. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven, zero. Petitions and communications, that's Boyd. "From the city administrator, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the vacation of utility easements in the Riverbend Second Edition. The proposed vacation of the utility easements would allow the purchasers of three lots within the addition to create two lots, and to create a new utility easement adjacent to the newly created property lines. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the request and unanimously recommends city council approve the request as submitted." Is there a motion, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Bob. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mark. This is a roll call. Bob Bynum.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Diane.
Aye.
And Jerry.
Aye.
Motion car- did you say no? Oh, I thought you said no, I'm sure. All right, motion carries seven, zero. "Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing an internal advance to the tax increment fund for TIF and economic development administrative costs. Cities in Iowa are required to certify the amount of TIF funds to be claimed for each TIF district no later than December 1 of the year prior to the fiscal year for which the funds will be collected. For 2012/2013, it is proposed that internal advancements, advances, which in parentheses, loans, again be established to claim TIF funds for the staff, TIF administration, and economic development efforts, as well as the GMCCI budget allocation. In order to claim TIF funds for these purposes, two resolutions are needed. The first resolution is for TIF administrative and economic development staff funding in the amount of $105,254. The second resolution is for funding of the allocation to the GMCCI in the amount of $35,000. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?"
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Diane.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Phil. Discussion.
Can, can you explain to me the second part of that, the second resolution, the $35,000? Greg?
If you remember, these are just procedural items that we began last year, so that this authorizes us to use TIF proceeds for both of these expenditures. Last year, we decided to do this. The timing isn't great, because we, we have to have this submitted to the county by December 1, by the end of the month, and of course, our budget's not due until March 15. What we did last year is simply use the current budget allocation that the chamber, the $35,000, and that's all we've done again this year. This does not prevent the council from, of course, you know, the chamber will have an opportunity to come before the council during budget and, and make a request for funding, and you can certainly prove an additional amount. We just would not be able to take it out of tax increment financing until the, the following year. It's kind of, it's kind of backwards.
Yeah.
But it's the way it works, and.
We could also decide not to.
You know, you could.
Use the, this is approving up to $35,000?
Yes.
It's not, it's not in essence.
We have to certify debt to, to the county by December 1, and $35,000.
I understand that.
That doesn't mean we have to expend the funds.
Okay, so, so this is giving us basically authorization to do this amount, but it's not necessarily committing us to.
Assuming the council agrees by our public hearing, and with our next fiscal year budget to, to include $35,000, then we would proceed and do that.
We have to do it in this order to have the option of funding it from that source.
To have the option from funding it from TIF.
Okay, okay.
It's backwards.
That's what I thought.
I agree, I wish we could do it in, in May, or April, but it's the way it works.
Well, setting it up to where you have the option is better than.
Then after.
In February going, dang, I wish we would have, so.
And, and we could, you know, let's, let's, as, as a, an example, say the council, majority of councils chose to contribute an additional. council, um, majority of councils chose to contribute, uh, an additional amount, forty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, uh, we could actually, uh, recover that fund, those funds, the following, this time next year, but, you know, it's, we're going backwards instead of looking forwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments, anyone? No one? Diane?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Bob Binham?
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
And motion carries seven zero. Item C, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing an internal advance to the tax increment fund for an economic development grant to the GMCCI in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Jerry.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Scott. Jerry?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Bob Binham?
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
And motion carries seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting completed work performed under the 2011 Street Improvements Project, and authorizing final payment. In June 2011, city council approved the contract with Illawha Investments Incorporated for asphalt overlay upgrades to several Muscatine streets. The completed project included one point five miles of streets and one trail segment. The project came in twenty-eight thousand nine hundred eleven dollars twenty-six cents below the contract price. It is staff's recommendation the completed work be accepted and final payment made to the contractor. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted? Moved by Osama.
Second, Your Honor.
Who?
Jerry.
Oh, Jerry, okay, I'm sorry, Jay. I just can't pick you up here at night. Osama?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Bob Binham?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for an oil dispensing system. Three bids were received, with the low bid from Pipe, Pipeco Company in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred forty-one dollars fifty cents. It is staff's recommendation the purchase order be issued for the oil dispensing system. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Phil.
Second.
Second by Mark. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for authorization to issue a purchase order for the golf course tee renovation project. Two bids were received, with the low bid from Bush Turf Incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars seventy-five cents. There is twenty thousand dollars budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
So moved, Your Honor.
Uh, moved by Scott.
Second, Your Honor.
And second by Bob Binham. Discussion.
I had one quick question for whoever wants to nick, or whoever. Uh, one of the...
It's on the question, I guess.
Yeah. Well, one of the, uh, the three of the tees are Bermuda being replaced with Bermuda, and the other one is bent grass, or, maybe I missed it, but I wasn't sure of the reason for...
You, you probably want an opinion from, from both, um, both gentlemen, so why don't you come up, and while you're walking, uh, if you recall, we had a, um, a public meeting out at the golf course, took a lot of good comments, had a good discussion with, um, golfers. We had thirty-some folks in attendance out there, and one of the suggestions from the, from the golfers was to use the bent grass, uh, on the tees, and, uh, this is where the, the professionals come in and ask you exactly why that, they'd like to see that, but, um, the, the budget allowed it for us to try it on one of the, uh, tees for next year, and, uh, so we'd like to give it a shot and see if it works.
Okay.
Yeah, Greg pretty much said it there. Um, number three tee box has been a problem for several years. In the middle of summer, it just gets so heavily used, and it's such a small area, there's very little turf on it by July and August. Bent grass is an opportunity for us to probably keep some more turf on there. It's a quicker recovery than the bluegrass is. There's, um, you don't ever really seed bent grass, it just kind of fills back in. It's the same material that's on the greens at the golf course, and typically, we don't reseed the greens, they just heal back in. Um, we were going to redo these tee boxes anyway, and this came up in the survey that that tee box was an issue, and this is one way that we think, we hope, we can alleviate some of that problem by going with the bent grass on that tee, and there wasn't enough money in the budget to try that out this year. The other three tees that we're going to be doing are going to be bluegrass, like they were in the past. It's kind of a trial to see if it works. We think it will, we're pretty sure it will. There's other golf courses that have bent grass tees and have very good luck with them, so it's just something that we're going to try.
Good. Thanks. Answers my question.
Anyone else, counsel?
A, uh, just a quick one here. Would either grass make the ball go straight?
No.
Anyone else, counsel? No one else?
That's irrelevant to you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. It's time for counsel comments. We'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two items. First, I would like to thank everyone that was involved in, uh, bringing the Latino Conference to Muscatine last weekend. Uh, they did a great job of organizing it. I thought it was a very successful event. I spent a lot of time there, and, uh, again, that's, that's the type of thing, we should be proud that we were able to have that right here in Muscatine. So, again, I want to thank everyone that was involved in that. The other item, uh, and I'm sure I'm not the only council member that's going to touch on this, but next Tuesday, we have an election, so make sure you go and vote. We have a race for mayor. Um, if you live in, uh, Di- Diane's district, Fifth Ward, we have a contested race there. I'm sure we can do better than the five and three-quarters percent that came out for the school board election, so if, you know, make sure you make time Tuesday and get to the polls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Phil?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Scott?
Just encourage everyone to get out and vote.
Good. Thank you very much. Osama?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Bob Binham?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And Diane?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jerry?
Your Honor, you're used to my going on and on. Could I deliver a short message tonight?
Of course.
Is that all right? Could I vocalize it?
Yes.
Okay. We'd like to invite the audience to join us in wishing the mayor a very happy birthday. Today is his birthday. I won't say which one, but anyway, I'll start the song. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mayor O'Brien. Happy birthday to you. Well, thank you very much, Jerry. I appreciate that, and everybody here, uh, it's been kind of party time the last two days, and when I walked in today, I said, you know, enough already, uh, we've had enough happy birthdays, but no, I really appreciated that one, too, Jerry, so thank you. And I understand you're now eligible for Medicare and Social Security.
I think so. I'm going to check it out this week, Phil.
Okay, check it out.
I think I'm going to be ill. All right. Anything else, Jerry? Nothing? Greg?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Ms. Fran?
Nothing, Your Honor. Jerry took the word for it.
Well, good. Thank you very much. I have nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn? Counsel is adjourned.